Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, February 17th, 2021. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. Meetings can now be viewed live on the City Channel and livestreamed on YouTube. Our first order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. Each speaker will be given three minutes. Please provide your name and neighborhood for the record. Our first speaker is Ikuhana Halmaukina.
Meetings of peace, light, and love. My title is Ikuhana Halmaukina and the Grand Inca of the Arikua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I have a very unique responsibility of ensuring my people that are part of my nation that I will do what is necessary to bring about justice throughout the land. And with that, I am present as much as possible speaking on City Council, to City Council members and beyond, speaking to mayors, speaking to other politicians who are sworn by the oath that they give to support, protect, and defend the Constitution, which according to the Commerce Clause in the Constitution, it is your obligation, it is your duty. It is with your own set of morals that should guide you to do what is right by the people of the land. You are to feed the steward over the people that you claim that you are working for. And if you're working for the people, then it is the people's interest that you should be working on behalf of. So I would employ you to do what is right because we, the Aboriginal American people, have been here in the Americas since time immemorial. And so when it is, when it is brought to your attention, as it has been over the past eight months, that there is an injustice that remains to be addressed. What, I have a question to ask, and I know you can't answer it right now, but you've been given opportunities to answer these questions directly. What will compel you to do what is right by the Aboriginal American people? It's your obligation, it is your duty, and now is the time. This is our ancestral land. And so when it's time to create healing spaces for our people, then make sure that those things are done. When it's time to create, because you've been taking over our land, and so now we're in the position to say, hey, we are here. And that's what we've been doing. We've been doing our due diligence, making sure you know who we are and what your obligation and trust obligation is to the Aboriginal indigenous American people. And so I would imp-
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Joy Sato. Ms. Sato, you-
Am I here? Do you hear me?
Yes, you are.
Okay, very good. Good morning, Madam President and members of the Pittsburgh City Council. My name is Joy Sato. I live at 789 Clarissa Street in Pittsburgh, PA, and I am absolutely delighted for the opportunity to say a few encouraging words to inspire your vote on the city historic landmark designation for Mellon Park. If anyone loves Mellon Park, I do. I worked at Pittsburgh Center for the Arts, located on the Mellon Park campus for 20 years as a Director of Special Events. I observed every upgrade and restoration that was done in Mellon Park during those years, from Beechwood Boulevard to the Rose Garden, from the Whimsical Frog to the Fountain and Terrace in the Wald Garden, where I directed hundreds of weddings and receptions, managed arts festivals, music concerts, school programs, hired vendors, caterers, DJs, musicians, and florists, and launched many new careers, helping photographers create portfolios and LGBTQ fundraisers. My most treasured accomplishments were acknowledged by Mayor Paduto for developing a Latin community in Pittsburgh by starting flamenco dance classes at the center. I also brought many new African-American groups to the center during my tenure. Many of them thanked me for providing a beautiful space to have events. There was a time when African-Americans were not allowed in the area of Mellon Park during the day or after dark. But this, these are the things that speak to the value of this great landscape. It has continued to transition into something better for more people since it was established in 1943. As we fight with faith and all of our resources to free ourselves from the pain of COVID-19, we realize it has taken so much from us by no fault of our own. We also realize we are moving into a new era in which we must all become change agents on some level in the coming seasons. It is the authority of legislative bodies like the City Council and the voices of the people that will steward our choices of things to let go of and things that we must preserve. Yes, I mean beautiful, world-class Mellon Park that stands firm below and sits high on a hill like a beacon of light in Shadyside, PA. I believe that Mellon Park is an important historic landscape, that it is deserving of protection from the city and its governments, that Mellon Park will be a cultural benefit to our grandchildren and great-grandchildren, and contribute greatly to their future and the legacy of the city of Pittsburgh. And I thank you.
Thank you very much for your encouraging words. That does exhaust our list of registered speakers, so we'll move on to our Standing Committee agenda. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Mr. O'Connor.
There.
Mrs. Kelsmith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
I am here, by the way.
Seven members present.
And Councilman Kraus is with us as well, but he was on mute.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Our first order of business today will actually begin with invoices. We will need a motion to approve the invoices.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the invoices? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. That takes us to P cards. We do have P cards for approval today. Need a motion?
Motion to approve. I'm sorry. I'll second or approve either one. Thanks, Councilman Wilson.
Motioned and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to our Public Safety Services Committee chaired by Ms. O'Connor. One deferred paper, Bill 1087.
Bill 1087, ordinance supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title I, Administrative Article III, Organization, Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety, to add a new subsection 116.17, for addition on the execution of no-knock warrants by requiring all city police officers when executing any warrant to physically knock and announce the presence of police before entering a premise, premises.
At the request of the, one of the prime sponsors, motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held two weeks. Just to give members a quick update, I did receive everything from law this week. I had, I did reach out to Ms. Fisher yesterday, let her know we would hold for, so she could have time to review, and I will get the meeting set up that we spoke about previously. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. First new papers, Bill 1196.
Bill 1196, Resolution, Amending Resolution Number 25, entitled, "Resolution Vacating a Portion of First Avenue, a Thirty-Foot Right-of-Way in the First Ward, Sixth Council District", to add specific information in regards to payment NPWSA's lines.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1174.
Bill 1174, Resolution for Amending Resolution Number 797, adopting and approving the 2018 capital budget and the 2018 CDVG program and the 2018 through 2023 capital improvement program by reducing East Carson Streets by $64,053.38 and increasing ramp in public sidewalks by $64,053.38.
Motion to approve. Second with discussion, please.
Discussion, Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just curious if anyone from Public Works might be here. I believe the reduction from the project is for the streetscape, but it is then invested in the ramps that are being created along the PennDOT project, and I just want to make certain that I'm right in that.
This is Director Rex.
Hey, good morning, Director Rex. Thanks for being here.
Sure. The project is complete, the streetscape project, which this was the streetlights that we installed. There's still the work that is ongoing from the PennDOT project for East Carson, which will include all of the ramps on East Carson Street. So this reprogramming will be for general sidewalk and ramp improvement in the city. So it's not, it's not moving it specifically for reinvestment in East Carson Street because the East Carson Street project is complete, so this is a residual budget amount. But this seems like the, the best, we, we have lots of sidewalk work to do throughout the city, so this is where we'd like to reinvest it.
So, thank you, I appreciate that. I think where I'm confused is in the wording of the, the, the resolution here, in that it is reducing the East Carson Street PennDOT project by $64,000, some odd dollars, but we're not. We're reducing the city's streetscape project, which included the trees and the new lightpoles and, and those kinds of things. So this is not money from the PennDOT project, it's from our city capital budget funded streetscape.
That is, well, no, it is, the wording is correct, the usage is confusing, admittedly, because the deliverable name that we added to this initial resolution that authorized this, this is, this is the correct name of the original authorizing resolution for this money, but it did not actually go to a PennDOT project, it went to our local streetscape. There was confusion because of the two projects kind of happening in quick succession with each other. So the name is actually correct, but you are correct that it is not actually for the PennDOT project that is getting reduced.
Great, thank you very much, Director, appreciate your help. I'm happy to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Director Rex.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for you. This has nothing to do with this, I just don't know who to ask, and I, I thought about this before that I forgot, who, where the, and this was later in the agenda, but in terms of the sewage facility plans, which, where does that come from? Which, which, which offices that come from?
The sewage facility plans are from PWSA, but they-
How did they come to us? Like, like who's, they don't come directly to PSA to us, it goes through somebody who's, who's the city recipient.
I, I believe they actually do directly come to you. I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that, but I can investigate it for you. They do not come through DOMI, however.
Yeah, that's the question. Do you know, I talked about this before, Councilman Gross, you may know, I just don't know.
There is a very long circuitous development review process that I'm sure you have heard of, right? Remember, Council authorized some several hundred thousand dollars for San Francisco Consulting Company to try to map it out and smooth it out and make it more transparent both to Council and to the public, and then to facilitate the online permitting process, et cetera. Remember all that? They interviewed each of us a little bit. So we still, yet, the sewer modules sometimes bounce back and forth because they have to be approved by planning and PWSA, right? Thus, the plan for the project has to be approved by planning, then it could go back and forth, PWSA could want changes, and then the developer goes back to planning with changes, and you go back and forth. But then, to the best of my knowledge, after getting a sewer permit, all legislation, including the sewer modules, goes through our law department, who are kind of making sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, and that is, that's my understanding today.
Okay.
Again, we have been having, I've had, like I'm showing email chains, and again, I think this is a very, very big topic that we've tipped away at a little bit over the last six or seven months. And I, my most recent chain was, unfortunately, someone in the law department suggested that I should be in charge of sewer modules, and that my staff should check and see whether or not people's development review packets were complete, which I think is a bad suggestion because my staff are not the administration.
Is there, is there a particular lawyer in the law department that's in charge of-
Benjamin Smith.
And Ben's on that email.
Yeah. Benjamin Smith, in law.
If you could, I, I'm gonna, I'll wait till we get to Ms. Gross's committee. If you could maybe have him come on, that would be great. If not, I'll talk to him offline. If he's not available, I'll talk to him offline. My, my real question is, what happens if we say no? That's really my question. If we vote down these modules, what happens? Do they, is there an appeal process? Can they go to common police court? That's really my question.
Yeah, I mean, I've always assumed that you just, you don't get to tap into our sewer system.
I just, I'm just curious. I'm just curious, I'm curious about this. I, I, I've been thinking about this for a while now, and I think I'm gonna do something-
I remember you talking about it when my first year's in office, maybe second year in office.
Yeah, I remember that. I remember you talking about this before. It's been in the back of my mind. So, okay. Thank you, sorry. Thank you, Director Rex.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 1175.
Bill 1175, Resolution Providing for a Supplementary Agreement with Allegheny County for Local Costs Associated with the Seventh Street Bridge Project and Providing for the Payment of Municipal Incurd Costs Not to Exceed $2,396.91.
To approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 1176.
Bill 1176, Resolution Providing for the Supplementary Agreement with Allegheny County for Local Costs Associated with the Tenth Street Bridge Project and Providing for the Payment of Municipal Incurd Costs Not to Exceed $98,144.73.
Motion to approve. Second, really brief discussion. So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Councilman Coghill. I don't know how many of you have had the opportunity to actually use the Tenth Street Bridge. I use it on a regular basis. It is owned by Allegheny County, and over the last, I want to say, it was probably a two-year period, there was an extensive restoration that took place on that bridge. And the, the craftsmanship and the quality of the work is just staggering. It is so well-done, and the history of the bridge was so well-respected that you would swear that it is in its absolute original state from when it was first constructed. And I, I made a point to call over to the county exec and, and let him know just what a magnificent job their contractors did in the restoration of that bridge. And, you know, we have three more very similar to this that are, of course, on the north side, six, seven, and nine, Councilwoman Wilson, right? Six, seven, and nine. And there's such a, an asset to the city, they're almost as if they are pieces of public art in the way that they were designed and constructed. And this, this contract, I guess we're pitching in our, our part here as to, you know, what our portion of the, of the cost of that bridge is, but I, I have to tell you that I could not be more delighted with the, the expertise and the care by which the restoration of that bridge was handled. So I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Next bill is Bill 1184.
Bill 1184, ordinance amending the city code at four locations within Chapter 719, vendors and peddlers, in order to update the city code to reflect the name change of Duquesne University's arena from the AJ Palumbo Center to Cooper Fieldhouse.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
Just, just brief discussion, Councilman. Hi, I just want to say that, you know, I'd like to make sure that this department's keeping a, a council informed of some of the applications that are coming for vending before them, because I know there's somebody who's waiting for one for my district, and we're eager to have it there, but it's the location that we have a concern with, so I just want them to make sure that we're engaged before it comes to council, so that we have a chance to get it right when it comes to council, without having to turn something down. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And also just want to thank Duquesne University for recognizing the historic significance of Chuck Cooper, being the first African-American drafted by the NBA and also playing at Duquesne University. So just thanking them for acknowledging the history. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. First deferred paper, only deferred paper, Bill 1118.
Bill 1118, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh city code, Title VI, article V, discrimination, Chapter 651, definitions, Chapter 65305, powers and duties, Chapter 659, unlawful practices, unlawful employment practices, unlawful housing practices, and unlawful public accommodation practices, to clarify and add language related to discrimination based on hairstyle and protective and cultural hair textures and hairstyles.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Again. Directors here, if anyone wishes discussion, I'm good to vote as amended if members are okay.
Thank you. Any, Councilwoman Gross?
Yes, thank you. I'm still, I said last week that I was happy to hold for a week because I wrote, I didn't think I understood at that time, kind of, it felt like people were using kind of veiled language or, or references that were too vague for me to follow, but, so I appreciate that in the intervening week, we've gotten kind of like very direct emails about like, this was the exact case, this was the, you know, concern, even from a, a member of the administration or an employee, I should say, who had concerns about the amendment directly. And so I just wanted to give the director another chance to, to come on and, and maybe speak again. I'm not sure I see Mr. Hammond anywhere.
He's on.
I'm here.
Thank you, appreciate it. So, um, again, we had a, we had a brief discussion last week, so I know that I understand things a little bit better, and so it was, like, I'm just gonna say, and you can correct me, so the case is that our initial passing of the Crown Act allowed basically for protection of all kinds of choices around facial hair, specifically in this case, it's a, an employee who wants to grow out a beard, but then there is in his department, a rule against it, right? Like an internal administrative rule against it. Am I representing this correctly? Should I be even more direct with it? And so, if this amendment would remove just facial hair? Am I understanding that correctly?
So, I think, and it's hard for me to know exactly because I'm not in the office that submitted the, the change, to know why this change was submitted, but there is a timing of what you're talking about. I believe Dave Mead did send an email to, to members of council explaining his experience. So what the question was, is there's a, a phrase in the Crown Act that says, "other forms of hair presentation", and could that be interpreted to include facial hair? And this person questioned that and said, you know, am I covered under the Crown Act? And it's open to interpretation? Quite potentially, yes, they are. And they, I believe, raised the question to their supervisor, could I be covered under the Crown Act? And the next thing that I can see happening is that phrase removed from the Crown Act. So I can't say that those are connected necessarily, but to me, removing that phrase removes that question of whether or not that person is protected by the Crown Act. And when I spoke last week, my question to council was, why is this, why is this a bad thing to protect people? And the answer that I got back, not from council, but from, I believe, Director Manuel and, I'm forgetting the name, Lindsay Powell, who came on, was that the Crown Act in its, in its preamble and in the spirit, is not intended to protect this person who is a white police officer with a beard, but is intended to protect black people and people who have religious exemptions, such as people who are Sikhs or Muslims. And my objection to that reasoning is that it's, there's two. The first is that civil rights does not work if you only protect one group of people. Civil rights only works if you protect all people. Civil rights law isn't a, isn't a tool of equity as it's trying to be used, it's a tool of equality. Equity comes from something else, but civil rights addresses equality. My other, my other concern here comes from my position as a person who cares about the city of Pittsburgh. I mean, all of this comes as a person who cares about the city of Pittsburgh, but I am extremely concerned about the legal implications of creating laws that might protect only one group of people, like only one race of people. Those types of laws can be in violation of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and can open the city of Pittsburgh up to broader, broader legal liabilities, which I just don't want to see because we simply as a city don't need any complications, any legal challenges, any, anything like that financially or emotionally as a city, socially as, as a population. We don't need to separate people and to potentially get in the way of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 or 68. It's, it's not, I don't think, in the city's best interest. So those are where, where my comments came in, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions if they're, if they're helpful.
Thank you. I apologize for choking on my coffee while I was listening to you. I, I'm inclined to agree with you. I, I don't believe that the singling out of a race or a religion, or even the lack of a religion, is, is, that is like uncivil and not the definition of civil, right? That we're extending these rights kind of without these categories was the way I remember being taught was the nature of the Civil Rights Act, right? And so I, I believe that it's, it, you know, is a catch-22, maybe some people would see it as. I do kind of respect the, the department's chagrin. I do kind of respect the, the department's chagrin at having a, a internal policy that now they have to change. But I think that I was given briefing by some email information from the, the employee that, that police departments around the country have been changing their policy around facial hair. So I'm going to, to agree with you, Director, that we, we, we just in, in a slippery slope, we, you know, in an indefensible position if we start to say like, oh no, but this applies to you and not to you because of whatever categorical label, you know, of concern at that day. So I don't support the bill as amended and, but I'm eager to hear other members' thoughts.
Oh, I forgot. Sorry if I can add two things that I forgot to mention. The first, which is yes, Councilperson Gross, there is a slippery slope. So one concern also that I had is gender identity. Should somebody say that a beard is part of their gender identity, that he was protected under our city code? And so do we then remove that? That, that threatens me. The other thing that I forgot to mention, which could be useful information, and I've spoken to the Law Department about this, is that any business could institute a policy that controls hair or beards if there's a legitimate business health or safety reason. So if there's a department in our city that has legitimate business health or safety reason that needs to control beards or any other kind of hair, they would be protected to make that policy. They could even bring it to the commission before instituting the policy for a review. But even afterwards, should somebody come with a complaint and they were then able to present that business health, safety reason for such a policy, the commission would certainly consider that.
Thank you. So that it doesn't actually have to be a legislative change in order for a policy to be kind of discussed, explored, and even defended and maintained. Right? So there, there still is an avenue. So I really appreciate you explaining that because it's not that by leaving the Crown Act as it stands, we're not saying that there can be no policy about anything. There still are, are good reasons for policies and then those can be discussed, explored, and supported.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that's all I have now, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, would you permit interrogatory?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Ham, thank you for being here. Director Manuel is on the line and I'd like to bring her in for the perspective of the HR department. If Director, if you could come on, please.
Good morning. Janet Manuel, Director of HR and Civil Service for the City of Pittsburgh. My apologies. I do not have my camera operating in the office, so you can only hear me but not see me. So my apologies. But I wanted to follow up in regard to, again, the core aspect of the implementation of the Crown Act, creating a respectful and open world for natural hair. Crown Act. This bill is offered for protection from hairstyle discrimination, not necessarily facial hair, but hairstyle discrimination for black and brown people at work, in housing, in the classroom, and in public spaces. That is the whole core concept of the Crown Act. It has nothing to do with trying to eliminate individuals and separating them because they are not of the black and brown community. It is fact that white males are not being discriminated against due to their facial hair. The fact is that there are black and brown people who are being discriminated based on their hairstyle in the workplace, in housing, in the classroom, and in public spaces. This is in regards to facial hair for employees. There are certain departments that have policies that can implement and help address that. But again, the amendment on this was in no way means of trying to eliminate any court group or eliminate anyone with their respective identity. But the core concept regarding the Crown Act, as it has been implemented in other cities throughout, has to do with the fact of hairstyle discrimination and that is very prevalent and relevant to the state for black and brown people. So, Councilman.
Yeah, no, thank you. And, and I appreciate your conversation earlier to help me understand better, understand the, the separation of the different departments in the city. And that, you know, I understand and accept your definition of the purpose of the Crown Act. And I believe that then, because it, it is intended, as I understand it, and correct me if I am wrong, to protect hairstyle as it relates to race, ethnicity, or religious affiliation.
You are correct, Councilman.
Yes, and that is the intent of what it is that the Crown Act is, its purpose to protect. In terms of our, our Public Safety Department, and I'll go so far as to say our Bureau of Police, the, the policy around appearance and/or dress code or hairstyle, length, facial hair, are those not matters that are, are decided then within the, the, the leadership from the chief on down, however they structure their, their, their hierarchy? Is that, are those not policy decisions then that are ma- made within the department?
You are absolutely correct. And so if there are any respective employees within the Public Safety Department, police, whatever, that have any questions or concerns, I would definitely advise those individuals to have a conversation with their respective leaders. If not, they can also come and speak with myself or one of my members of management within the Department of HR. I have yet to hear of any concerns or anyone being discriminated based on their facial hair, that they are being treated indifferently based on their facial hair. But to your point, Councilman, there are respective department policies that will and does address that.
I, I know I had the opportunity to speak with Solicitor Kobe in the Law Department and there was some level of reservation in, in being able to acquire facial hair as it relates to the public safety of the officer. And I'm, I'm not sure if you had spoken with law. I believe you were in that discussion and correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if there were certain lengths of facial hair or head hair that were styled in such a way that it could be used as a weapon against the officer. The, the common term today seems to be a hipster beard, but if, if a gentleman, you know, or someone identifying were to, to grow a beard at a certain length, it actually could be used to bring an officer down, as Solicitor Kobe explained to me. And, and I believe there are certain policies within the, the Bureau that would then protect our female officers much in the same way in terms of wearing hair up or under the cap so as to not having it long and be used in, in some way to, to assault an officer. Am I understanding that correctly?
And your recollection is spot on, Councilwoman Kraus. And so again, you hit one of the key things and that comes into the play of safety. And I believe Director Hammond mentioned that individuals do have that right to be protected from, from that aspect. And so with this respective policy that is in place within the public safety area, that is for, by all means, not from a discriminatory standpoint, but more so from a safety standpoint, not only for our respective employees, but then even our constituents that they have an encounter with. So.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no. Go ahead. You're fine.
No, no, I, I, I'm good. Thank you. I just wanted to make certain that I had a clear understanding as to the delineation of responsibility as to our desire as a city to be progressive and in terms of how we protect hair expression in, as it relates to race, ethnicity, and religious affiliation for us, us, the black and brown people especially. But then the, the separation of policy within a, a police bureau that would then not be legislative, but rather be a matter of their hierarchy, hierarchy in the Bureau of Police determining that for, for officers.
You are correct.
I, I appreciate it. I'm happy to relinquish the floor and for any members that might have other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members for first round? Councilman Coghill?
Okay. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So whether this question is for Jan, Janet, or Jam, I'm not quite sure, but I understand the spirit of this bill, you know, which I agree with. However, it gets cloudy and, you know, we get into a jam, no pun intended, jam, when we start looking at police officers thinking, oh, well, now I can grow a beard. So in passing this, are we now going to have to rely on the policy of the department head, I guess, Wendell Histrich, to prevent whether it's white, black, whatever officers to grow facial hair?
Um, that's an interesting question. I mean, so I think, I, I think I'm curious why, maybe Janet has a, has a better answer as to, you know, the policy of the police department and its relationship to this legislation. I think they're separate and should probably be separate. Going back to what Director Manuel said, it's going to be, I think, hard to prevent people from attempting to access their civil rights if they think a civil rights law could protect them and they should have the right to ask that question. So we could, you know, this question came about because of the phrase, other forms of hair presentation. And by the way, there are, there are areas where facial hair is protected just as facial hair. And I will also mention there are other Crown Acts that were referenced that were proven to be unconstitutional because they specifically protected black and brown people and it's unconstitutional and against the Civil Rights Act to call out a specific race that's protected. But even if we're looking at this particular phrase, other forms of hair presentation, and we think that that relates to beards, are we then, if we remove it, going to argue that the phrase natural hair or hair based on race will not refer to a person's natural hair or the hair of any race or the hair of any religion? I just don't, I just don't know. And I also wonder still, how, how, what is harmed by protecting facial hair? If it's protected, what is harmed? And is the harm that a police officer thinks that they might be protected by civil rights law? I think all people are protected by civil rights law. So I'm not sure that that's a harm or a danger.
So Jam, so we're in a position, right, where by passing this, we open the floodgates for officers to have beards. And maybe, you know, maybe I'm disgruntled because I still can't grow a full beard or a mustache. I don't know. But, but I don't think it's professional. I'd rather not our police officers have beards and mustaches and things like that, of that nature. You know, so it comes, becomes a policy issue and it becomes, you know, Director Histrich, you know, telling fifty folks that, you know, we're not permitting it. And if, is that right? I mean, because under this current, it opens a floodgate for them to do, you know, whatever they want. I've gotten some emails from some police officers and I could see it now, you know, I could see lots of beards and mustaches on the police force. I tend to think it's just not right myself, okay? But of course I support the Crown Act and the spirit of that. I just feel like both are kind of muddled and, you know, you're, I guess what we're concluding here today is that in passing this, it would give everybody the right, you know, to grow beards and mustaches, no?
No.
I, I think that, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
Go ahead, Councilman Kraus. What, what do you mean, no?
No, 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 no. It would be, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't want to just butt in. It, it, I don't know how better to explain it. The passing this bill today as the Director states is the continuation of protecting the Crown Act as we understand it to be. And then it leaves separate the policy for facial hair to the leadership of the Bureau of Police. So, but you're saying that by passing this, it permits officers to protect facial hair is not accurate. It is this, there, there are two separate discussions. This is about a continuation of protecting the Crown Act and then the policy for facial hair for police officers then remains a, a, a policy decision within the Bureau.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Kraus. And that's kind of what I figured. So I'm in support of this today for the spirit of the Crown Act. However, I hope Director Histrich, you know, puts down the policy that I have to count on in order to make sure that our officers aren't, you know, looking like Grizzly Adams for those of you who, who remember Grizzly.
Hey, if I can just respond briefly to what you said, I respect your opinion that beards are unprofessional. I'm not sure how deeply into the policy of personal appearance you've been, but it's not all officers who are not allowed to wear beards. It's only uniformed officers. Other officers are allowed to wear beards. And I will also say, I believe you did probably read and receive the email from the employee that the belief that one person's appearance is unprofessional when it's their natural preferred appearance and instituting a policy that, that governs that and judges people on the basis of their appearance is a hindrance to diversity. And so I also understand Councilperson Kraus's interpretation that passing this is protection of the Crown Act, but I disagree. I believe passing this is not protecting the Crown Act or anything in particular. I think it's removing. So I, I understand and respect that your opinion is that beards are unprofessional, but I, I would caution everybody, not just people on council, but everybody that I know that judging a person and making judgments on a person on the basis of their appearance and putting that into policy, employment or otherwise, is a hindrance to diversity in the city, in your life in general.
Yep. And I understand that. And unprofessional is probably not the right word there, Jam. So, you know, I, I will retract that. I guess, you know, I don't know quite what word to put on it. I just don't feel that maybe, 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 maybe just because some people grow bears and for me, they're, you know, sloppy, okay? And a police officer showing up at a scene is, you know, I feel it's important that they look professional and you can see their face. That's all. But so unprofessional was probably not the right word to have said there, but I'll support it today and we'll just hope for the best as far as I'm concerned, as far as, you know, my concerns as to every police officer, beards and mustaches that we can't see their face.
And just to remind everyone, it is possible, regardless of this change or the lack of this change, for any employer, including the city or the department of the city, to say, this job is exempt from the Crown Act because of business, safety, health reason. So if the law were to stay as it is, the Bureau of Police could come and say, there's a health, safety, business reason that we have this policy.
Yep. And I get that. You know, we all remember Troy Polamalu being pulled down by his hair on a football field, right? So it, it does become, you know, a safety issue, but it could be anyway. So, okay, that's it. You know, I'm very much supportive of the spirit of the original bill. I worry about, you know, the other ramifications that come along with it, but that's it for me.
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Burgess.
Ma'am, Director.
Yeah.
So this, this idea captured in the book, white agility, this whole dichotomy that being a, being a racist is bad, you know, and it's in, but that truth is all, if all of us have implicit bias in how we view the world. And one doesn't have to be a racist to engage in racist activity, often not realizing it's embedded in us. It's, it's how we see the world, right? So it's not that we think of ourselves as racist. We may not be racist. You know, be, you're not a racist, but you have, because you grew up in a certain environment, you have these automatic reflexes, you know, that you say toward black people and that you just can't help it. It is, it is, it is racist in its activity. It doesn't mean the person is racist. And almost always, in my experience, whenever you do something different against black people, for whatever reason, when it becomes the first time this happens, almost always in my lifetime, normally it's racist. When they, whenever they say, you know, we, we've done this, it wasn't racist. Of course, we've done, we've never done this before in any other circumstance, but we've done it this time. Almost ninety-nine percent is because of our racist reflexes. So my question really is, I mean, the Crown Act is nice, but how do we, and you know, I, I, I was saying that I didn't get a chance to go see a professor, D'Angelo, when she was going to come to Pittsburgh because the pandemic came. I've read her book a couple times. I've read, I've been reading anti-racist literature. So, and, and, and it, because it manifests itself on council over and over again, where we unintentionally say these racist things, not realizing that they're racist. I don't think we mean it, we just don't know better. How do we, how do we, has there been some thought to using this framework to do racial reconciliation beyond, like the police had to do it, right? We were in the national initiative to build community trust with this whole idea of implicit bias was, 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 was forced in the police. And my question really is, have we done that same work on this side of the ledger, right? In the, in the other, you know, the non-employee, non, the non-union employees? Is there a process to get at this? And again, the Crown Act, you know, nice thing, but the real work of this is, is to now start to become real, to kind of re-clarify that we are all biased. And we do sometimes unintentionally what we think is natural. We were, it's just, it's natural to us, but not realizing that that what's natural for us, unfortunately, has racial overtones, especially to people of color. And so, and I'm, I'm tired of sort of, not tired. I don't always have to, and I've gotten to the point, I used to just ignore it. I won't ignore it anymore. When they, when now I'm at the point is when you say things that are racist, I'm going to call you on it. You know, I won't allow it because, you know, I've allowed it for sixty-three of my years. I've had to just take it. All right, take it now. Right? I'm at the end of my career. And so every time you say something racist to me, I'm going to point it out. How do we, Janet, how do we get these classes? I know it has to do with trust. I'm not, obviously, I'm not the best messenger to teach this, but I do know what needs to be taught. How do we, how do we, I don't, I just, that's really my question. Have, I'm sure you're, you know, been very thoughtful about this. How do, how, how do we institute this sort of implicit bias training and, 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 and doing this anti-racist work and embed it, embedded rather, in, in our city's culture?
Thank you, Reverend Councilman Burgess, for your comments. And you are correct in, in your thought process of the implicit bias and all of us have biases. But in particularly, how does a respective employer, not only for the city of Pittsburgh, but all employers throughout, continue to make sure that this conversation is on the forefront? Not only have the conversation on the forefront, but make it understandable for all employees in the workplace to know that by, that prejudices do have, does matter, that it does have impact and that it's not tolerated in the workplace. And so there is respective training. So within the Department of HR and Civil Service, Natasha Molinaro is our Senior Talent Development Coordinator, and she has already outlined respective training and implicit bias training is one. I know that this department has also partnered with the respective Borough of Police as, as we have worked with them on rolling out their respective implicit bias. And so here we are in the, still in the midst of the pandemic and COVID, of just trying to make sure that we implement it, rolling it out online virtually. It is taking a little bit longer than we anticipated, but it is in the works. When it comes to implicit bias or just helping all members of any workplace environment understand the rights for everyone, the, the training is always continual, but also for us not to shy away from tough topics such as this, like the Crown Act and the whole reason why it actually had to be implemented, which is shameful and inexcusable in the twenty-first century, but here we are. Still having to implement it because of people being discriminated based on their respective hairstyles. But again, to answer your question, there is training that is being implemented. It's taking just a smidgen longer than I even anticipated for it to be rolled out all the way, but we, we are continuing on that path. But it's, it's also beyond training. It's also all of us, not only attending training, but adhering to what we have learned and implementing that as well.
This is the work of our time. This is the work of our time. When we are going to now talk about the educational achievement of these kids, we're going to see that black kids are failing alarmingly. This is the work of our time. Whenever you say, everybody's pain is valuable. Everybody's pain is significant. I know doubt cause that. I'm a pastor. I've sat in nursing homes with people of all genders and I've been in hospitals of people of all races and I've seen their pain. Everybody's pain to them is legitimate. However, I will say, and it is proven by data, when you layer over race to anything, it is worse. If you're poor, that's a problem. If you're black and poor, it's worse. That means if you're black, if you're poor in Pittsburgh and white, you live in a good community. You don't live in a poor community. You have grocery stores, drugstores, fast food restaurants. If you're white and poor, your experience in Pittsburgh is completely and utterly different than if you're black and poor. If you're black and poor, you live in a neighborhood where there's no drugstores. There's no sit-down restaurants. There's no clothing stores of any type. There may be no gas stations in your entire community. You probably live in a food desert. Your experience is different and worse. If you're gay, lesbian, transgendered, if you're white, your experience is one thing. If you're black and transgendered and lesbian, your experience is much worse. If you're a white female, you have prejudice and hostility against you. And I believe that. I've gendered, you know, I went to school to study racism, gender. I was shocked that it was to me more widespread than race. It's worldwide. The problem of not respecting women is a worldwide problem. I spent thirty years teaching against it in all my classes, which I have, you know, segments in all my classes about it. But if you're black and female, then your outcomes are worse. This finally, you know, I've been saying this probably now for all of my life, all of my career, and it always gets pushed off. Oh, no, this is, this is the time for this group. This is the time for that group. This is the time for this other group. And that's really what's more important. No. The work of our time right now is racial equity and the acknowledgement that the first sin of this country was racial prejudice, discrimination and exploitation. We are in a system that every day explicitly, directly, continually exploits black people. We are segregated by race in where we live. We are segregated by race on purpose so that black people in Homewood do not have the property values of white people in white communities. It is a system designed to enslave and depress black people. That is a truth. And I know that makes people uncomfortable to hear it. Of course, it makes me uncomfortable and I am black, right? It makes me uncomfortable too. But this frank conversation is the work of our time. It is, I am, I, I believe, you know, given my age and, and, and my tenure, I, I, I have been called to champion this work. But it is not just to empower black people. That is a goal, but not the overall. The ultimate goal is to be a city for all. But the only way, the only pathway to become a city for all is to become a city where Black Pittsburgh matters because we have for hundreds of years intentionally, directly exploited people of color. Now we must intentionally and directly disproportionately engage them, bless them, invest in them and build them up. I'm grateful to be with Councilman Lavelle and our mayor to do just that. That is my work. I have been doing that. I think we're doing a good job. We will continue to do that. But part of it is to have this conversation from time to time. I do not mean to be insulting, but we need to be honest about it, extraordinarily honest. Because when we're not honest, then the status quo is allowed to continue and it is deadly. It is toxic. It is, it is, it is, and it's, we look at the results. Look at it. Go look at the kids' results. Go look at the outcome of black people. If the system is allowed to stay just like it is, we will see this disastrous consequence. And because of the pandemic, these problems, this is the worst crisis for black people of our time. Make no mistake about this. This is the worst. This is may in many ways be, this is probably worse since, since the Emancipation Proclamation. This may be the worst moment for black people in the history of our country. The pandemic has now exploited these differences in such a way that are tremendous in terms of health and, and education and wealth. It's just exploding. Fifty percent of black businesses have failed. I mean, we're in a crisis, black people now. This moment is devastating. And so we should, all of our, this has to be the work of our time. This is the moment. This is the time. This is the pathway for it. So yes, I support the Crown Act, but this is just the start of multiple things we have to do over and over. Avenue's a hope. You know, police reimagining, investing in black communities over and 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 over again. And it still won't be enough, right? It's still, in our lifetime, it will not be enough. I, I, I know I'm, I'm, I'm stuck in too long. I drive through, you know, I've, I've been able to build these large, I drove through Lamar, right? We, Lamar's probably, you know, my, they say it has something to do with it, maybe. The Lamar choice, the four hundred units that they're building may have been the best project I've done. But I can drive a few blocks from there and go steal and see houses where there's hopelessness, where there's windows knocked out and sheets over windows, right? No matter how much work we do, this problem will not be fixed, be fixed in my lifetime. Hopefully, my kids, who are all studying this issue academically, one way or another, hopefully they will be part of a different generation. I have hoped really, that they will go farther than we have. But from now till the end of my term on council, this is, will be my laser-like conversation every session, every meeting, every encounter. This is my concern, is how are we, how are we dealing with the implicit bias in our city? And how are we making remedies to those people who have been historically discriminated by these practices? This is a good step. There are many, many more to come.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any other members for first round? Councilman Schlossberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is a really important conversation and Reverend Burgess, thank you for, for your comments. And one thing that stuck out to me was the need to have these conversations over and over again. But I also agree with your point that we need to have these conversations in a different way. I think with the cameras off and through an actual facilitated training, an anti-racist and anti-bias training. So I would encourage us all to, to find a way to do that and take advantage of what we, of what, you know, Director Manuel and her department have to offer. I really love to see that. Back to the Crown Act for a minute. I, I keep coming back to the question of who is being discriminated against and who is facing the actual discrimination. And last week I was, I was a little confused about what, why, the reason behind the changes. I brought it up. I raised, I raised the question. And since then, I've had a lot of time to talk with many people and to think about this. And, you know, I've worked with the Commission on Human Relations over my time here in many ways. Every single time we had to prepare for the question from the news media, from whomever, who's facing discrimination? Is the discrimination real? And in this case, when I think about who's being discriminated against when it comes to facial hair, you know, putting aside the police officer for just a second, because I think that is, is muddying the water a little bit. And for the record, I do believe that beards can be professional and can be safe and can be, you know, if there, if there were to be a policy that changed within public safety, that there are many different versions of facial hair that can be both safe for, you know, a tight-fitting mask and safe for, you know, other reasons as well. And I will tell Lieutenant Need that directly in an email as well, that, you know, if we need, if he needs advocates to, to help that in the internal policy, that's great. But putting that aside for a second, I think about other people who might face discrimination because of facial hair. And I just am coming up empty with, with examples of, that wouldn't otherwise be covered by religion, which is a protected class, or gender identity and expression, which isn't a protected class because of the work that Councilman Kraus and I did together a couple of years ago. So I, I'm failing to recognize, I understand what Director Hammond is saying about the need for, this is equality versus equity and this, that you can't single out specific people that you're looking to protect here. But I don't think that the Crown Act as would be amended does. I think it says that there are types of hair, regardless of who you are, that are, that are, that cannot be discriminated against, that you cannot be discriminated against because of that. And regardless of what, you know, the intention is, that could cut across race, gender and, you know, ethnic and religious lines. So it seems to me that it still would be protective of, you know, a wide swath of people, just not someone who can't bring a, a just cause before the commission because of a religious or a gender identity expression or another reason because of their beard, if that makes any sense at all. So I, I'm comfortable with this amendment now that I've had some time to think about it and some, some conversations with people. I just wanted to distinguish between what I think is an internal policy of the police and what I think is before us today.
Thank you very much. Council President Smith? You're, you're on mute, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Madam Kirk. I know she sent you a text. I just want to say real quickly that I'm ever, I've heard all the conversations and I really think that the broader issue is that we should really be looking to what the obstacles are for employment in the, within the city of Pittsburgh for every department. And I do know that there was a study done by the Department of Justice, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, I think in two thousand and sixteen, that was established by President, then President Obama, to look at the, the obstacles and barriers to employment. And one of the things that we're seeing a result of that in other cities are that they're eliminating the facial, the facial hair requirements or limitations, especially in the police departments. And so that's one way that they're actually increasing diversity. That's an effort to increase diversity. I don't know the success of it yet. So I, and I think that I've had a conversation with Council, with Chief of Staff Gilman previously, that, you know, one of our policies for DPW, its internal policy, was that you have to have a driver's license to be employed by the department. And I said, you know, I understand if there's four drivers and a truck of two- And I said, you know, I understand if there's four drivers and a truck of two of them are licensed drivers in case something would happen to one. But I don't understand the purpose for all four having to have a license if they're not all four driving the vehicle. And so I just thought maybe that might be some of the obstacles. And I just, it would be probably be helpful if council would form a, um, committee to work together, maybe with, like, Councilman Burgess, Councilman Kraus, and other who might have concerns or want to be, participate, in trying to come up with something to avoid all these obstacles or address all the obstacles. I think here might be one of those things that we have to work, as I've heard several times here, independently of this vote today. So I think that, um, when there are, there are officers that, that want to have facial hair and some of, some people I know, like my Middle Eastern family, can always help their facial hair, whether it's for male or females. So I, I hear Councilman Kalkil saying he can't grow a beard. I'm thinking, Mike, um, we wish as they could stop. So, so I just want to say, I think that, um, knowing that there are barriers where people have issues or, or not, or just desires to have a beard, doesn't make them any less able to do their job or any less professional. It, and it also, my concerns, doesn't make them less safe. And so I think that that's the stuff that we need to look at and work with Director Hristic because he has a, you know, just a tremendous amount of knowledge when it comes to public safety. So I think working together, that's how we'll come up with the best policies to increase diversity with our, within our entire workforce. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members for first round? Seeing none, second round, I believe I saw Councilwoman Gross and then Councilman Kalkil.
Thank you. I just have to state, um, that we have at the table, so to speak, the people who can be viewed here. Um, look, four male, um, you know, representatives and members with facial hair. I don't think you should be excluded from office. I don't think you look unprofessional. I don't think you present a safety hazard. Um, and, but I do want to just kind of come back to the points that Mr. Hammond made last week, which is that what we have in front of us today, the amend, we amended by substitution last week first, and then we held. So the way Mr. Hammond presented to me and to the public, right, that is that the amendment by substitution that is in front of us today is a reduction of rights and, which is kind of removing some protections from some people. So the Crown Act that we passed in October, I believe, of 2020, um, I understand it to be more robust and provide more coverage. Um, I also heard, I think, both from Director Manuel, from Councilman Kraus, from Mr. Hammond, that there is still, even under our currently more robust, um, Crown, more inclusive Crown Act passed in, in October, that there's still pathways for administrative departments to have policies, um, that protect the safety of individuals or of the public and that could involve lengths or style or hair, where it is and what it does and all that kind of stuff. So, um, I, uh, what we have right now is what I understand is that the police department has some policies. Um, we have this more inclusive Crown Act. Um, if we voted this down today, the more inclusive, um, policy stands from October. Um, and then we can still, you know, have reasonable policies around these things. And it did, it doesn't cause an undue burden to city departments. This is what I'm hearing. Um, and so I'm going to vote no on this amended version of the Crown Act that I understand to, to, from Mr. Hammond, to, um, exclude some people or reduce the rights that are being offered. So I just wanted to clarify because it is confusing because what is in front of us today is an amended by substitution. We did that last week. I might, I understood that correctly, right? We did do that last week.
Yes.
We amended by substitution. We discussed a little bit, and then we held for this week.
Correct.
Appreciate it. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Kalkil? No. Oh, sorry. You're on mute.
No, I'm sorry. I didn't have a question.
Okay.
I don't know if I probably was scratching my head. Sorry.
No worries. Any further discussion from members? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, aye.
Opposed.
Want to oppose? Any abstentions? Bill is recommended. Thank you all.
Thanks.
That does move us on to our Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. Um, our first fir paper is Bill 1048.
Bill 1048 Resolution Providing For Designation As A Historic Structure Under Title 11 Of The Code Or It Says At Certain Site Known As Melon Park Located In Point 3, 7th And 14th Wards Of The City. The city is the owner of this property and there has been no objection to the nomination.
Motion to approve, brief discussion?
Second.
I just want to, uh, open the floor for, um, any members that may say something about this property. Doesn't reside in my district, but, um, has my full support. It's been through the public hearing process and has the approval of the, uh, you know, all entities in the City Plan Department.
Thank you. Any members, Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, um, Councilman Wilson. Yeah, I just wanted to say briefly that we had a, um, a very well-attended historic review, um, here, related hearing, public hearing, that was also attended by Councilwoman Gross and, um, just had overwhelming support from, from neighbors, from SquarHole Urban Coalition, Friends of Melon Park, Point Breeze Organization, all the sort of, um, many of the, of the neighboring organizations that have been working on this historic landmark status. And I'm in full support. I just want to thank everyone who's spent so much time and really dug into the details on, um, you know, uncovering the history and historic nature of this park. It really is, as was said by Sarah Quinn from City Planning, um, our historic city planner. Uh, this is probably the only park in the country, if not one of the few, that has the history of kind of, and has, has been touched by, but it's called like the grandfather of landscape architecture, but is open to the public, free of charge. Mostly that does not happen. If you go to other places around the country, you have to pay to see landscape architecture like this. Um, I think that, you know, you really heard it today in our call-up comment from Ms. Joy Sato, who has such a history there. And I just really want to thank her for speaking today, um, for her work in Melon Park for Pittsburgh Center for the Arts, but her work, you know, outside of Mel, outside of Pittsburgh Center for the Arts for Melon Park as well. She's been such a champion of the park and it really showed through her comments today. So to everyone who's, um, who has been working on this, I shouldn't forget Preservation Pittsburgh as well. Um, I really appreciate the work that you've done. And it will continue to be a park that is used in many different ways. And I think the big discussion now is how do we turn it into, um, more of a campus feel? So all the different programming that's happening, all the activities that are happening, it feels like a full campus and a full complement of different activities that you could take advantage of in, um, in this small but vibrant park. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Councilman Kalkil?
Yes, no, you know, I've said in the past I was going to abstain on all historic preservations. I will break my own rule for this because I think this is a worthy one. It's owned by the city of Pittsburgh and it's well-deserving. So this one time I'll step out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Um, that takes us to our new paper, Bill 1182.
Bill 1182 Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 Entitled Resolution Adopting And Approving The 2019 Capital Budget, The 2019 CDBG Program And The 2019 Through 2024 Capital Improvement Program So Is To Reduce Southside Athletic Association By $5,000 And Increase The Sher Association By $5,000 And Authorize A Subsequent Agreement.
Motion to approve?
Uh, discussion, please?
Yes, brief discussion.
Hey, Councilwoman Wilson, uh, deep apologies.
I'm real quick, just provide a second first.
A second. Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. Yeah, thank, second. Uh, deep apologies, Councilwoman Wilson. I had every intention of reaching out to you last week. We're trying to figure out, I'm working with the budget office as to why we're transferring this from the Southside Athletic Association to the Brisher Association. And there seems to be a point of confusion there and we're still trying to work it out. So if you would, please, could, uh, we offer up for another one week hold and I'll, I'll, uh, be ready next week.
No problem. Um, I, I guess I thought you had some clarification, but, um, uh, motion to, uh, hold one week.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will be held one week. That takes us to our Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger, uh, one new paper, Bill 1181.
1181 Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And The City Solicitor To Enter Into An Agreement With SciCom Data Systems, Inc. For Professional Services Relating To Continuing Maintenance, Support, And Upgrades To The City Law, The Department Of Law's Current Legal Case Management And Administration Support Software System At A Cost Not To Exceed $11,376.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Gross, our one defer paper, Bill 634.
Bill 634 Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official Soul Facilities Plan For Proposed Land Development Located At 316 South Howland Avenue In The City.
Motion to hold six weeks.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held six weeks. Our new papers, Bill 1177.
Bill 1177 Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official Soul Facilities Plan For The Achieve A Building Renovation 2614 Smarland Street.
Motion to approve with brief discussion?
Second.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, the next two bills I did check with law and planning and everyone. I appreciate Councilman Lovell's office, I think, started the chain because he was checking on the Grenada, um, with theater, which is coming up next. But I do have, um, after digging while we were talking in my computer, something I'd like to share briefly with members since we got on the topic today. So I'm going to share my screen just briefly and hopefully I'll do this right. Can you see that?
No, no.
Share.
Yep.
Yes?
Yes.
There you go. This is the official city of Pittsburgh development process that we all, I think this is what we, as council members voted for, for the funding. And I said it's a very circuitous path, right? And this is why I can't say to the law department, oh, sure, don't, I'll have my staff double-check and make sure. We are not members of the administration. There are many, many people in the administration who are responsible to be sure that a development permits are issued when they should be and where they should be according to code that we have, uh, all put in place because we are the body that creates the code. But, um, you see my mouse kind of circling here. Um, this little part, this, well, it's not independent, actually. There's, there's PWSA throughout. Um, there's PWSA here, but there's a part, as you've gotten through all of this up above. And then all here, this is where I kind of understand it, that it flows down to here. And it goes not just to PWSA, it goes to DEP, PWSA, Alka-San, law. And then still yet, after city council, you technically don't have your sewer permit. DEP could still throw it out. Um, and that has happened, um, in my time on council. Um, and they really, as the State Department of Environmental Protection, are the, the way I understand it, again, but, you know, I'm welcoming further, further conversation, um, is that this is, um, they are granting us the permission to issue sewer permits. And they can take it away so that we would not be able to build anything. I mean, that was the kind of threatening letters that were issued some number of years ago. I actually did talk about it, um, when we were in session. Um, so I'll stop sharing. Um, so I, I would love to talk more about this offline or in other meetings. Um, and we can talk about, um, you know, how, when, when it gets to our part that, and my question has been, these months back and forth, the conversation, um, it appeared that some of those, the, the sewer permits were getting to our council agenda, sometimes having, um, skipped some of the steps on that chart and sometimes, um, had skipped over us and had already built their buildings. Um, and so neither situation seemed right or certainly, um, to be, uh, according to our responsibility to the public. So I just wanted to, to say that these two modules, next one, this one I'm supportive of this one. And the next one, they're both, um, have received all of their permits according to the email change that I have. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any, any further members, Councilman Cross?
Yeah, brief, uh, Councilwoman Gross, can you share that flow chart with me, please? Would you? Yeah, thank you very much. I'd love to talk with you about it.
I'm sorry, it was a minute. I'll email it to you. Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further members?
Yes, Councilwoman.
President Smith?
Thank you. I just want to thank Councilwoman Gross for all the work she does with this. And I do want to say that I have been talking to Chief of Staff Gilman, who I know is also working on the whole flow chart, um, with other people, um, not our office, but with other people, including people who have to go through the process. So hopefully between, um, he and Councilwoman Gross, we come up with something that's, um, much more user-friendly and, um, in, in the correct, uh, sequence. So thank you very much, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Any further members? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That brings us to our last bill, Bill 1178.
Bill 1178 Resolution Adopting Plan Revision To The City Of Pittsburgh's Official Soul Facilities Plan For The New Granada Square Apartments 2023 Through 2033 Center Avenue.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended, and that does exhaust our agenda for today. We do have meeting announcements. Um, next week, council will hold their regular and standing committees meeting on Tuesday and Wednesday, February 23rd and 24th at 10:00 a.m. respectively. Also, next Wednesday, February 24th at 1:00 p.m., council will hold a post-agenda discussion on the HIV AIDS Commission chaired by Councilman O'Connor. To register to speak at the council meetings, please fill out an signup form in its entirety on the council meeting schedule webpage. Registration deadlines are 9:00 a.m. the day of the regular and standing committee meetings. You may also regular to speak, register, excuse me, to speak by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Is there any announcement from members? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Senator.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned.